Order of the Municipal Services, Parks and Recreation Committee. Clerk, will you take role?
Mr. Teasman. Mr. Barr.
Present.
Ms. Lang.
Here.
Summary of proceedings, we have none. New business, Municipal Seven, Cyber Security. Clerk, will you read?
Ordinance adopting a cybersecurity policy for the city of Marion, Ohio in accordance with the Ohio Vice Code 9.64 and declaring an emergency.
So it looks as if we have to have this cybersecurity policy in place by January 1st of 2026 per the state?
Our IT guy Jacob is here.
Okay.
Yeah, January 1st is the requirement. Yeah, House Code 96 is what this is. January 1st is the requirement for the passage date and implementation date.
Okay. Anything that you see that needs to be added or omitted from this?
No, I looked through it. All the stuff in there, we were already doing as far as other parts. The idea is to establish a framework and permission to start the program.
Okay.
And then a lot of the other policies and stuff would come into play later. Most of them were already in play, but it just puts in the paper more or less.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Lang?
No, this is all over my head.
Okay. Anything from the administration? Votes of the committee?
Send it on to Council.
I'll second that. If you'll take role.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Any matters not on the agenda for this committee?
I'm not sure if this for this committee or not. I thought this was really purpose of municipal services, not, I don't know. What's going on with the silent sabotage since we're discussing IT? We've got city council people and we've got, I see we're not having a presentation tonight, but it's rumor. And I mean, we've had people in their official capacities on these shows when these rumors are being discussed. And I know I'm not the only person in the room that knows what silent sabotage is or steep whatever. But if our computer systems are being hacked, I understand why we're adopting this because the state of Ohio told us they had to. I read it, I get it. But it's being presented on social media that a Facebook page has put this from this into action and they've put in their input on it and they were supposed to have been here tonight. I see that must have followed through. But like, is our IT system being hacked? What's going on? We have 150 correcting entries and we're being told that it's really, I don't know who they are, but they are sabotaging our software. And I think that if that's what's going on, the public deserves answers. And if that's not what's going on, the public also needs to be told that.
I don't have any answers for you, Ms. Gregg. I don't know.
Ms. Lang has been, I mean, you've been on the shows when they were talking about the hacking of the IT system.
Not on the IT side. I haven't spoken at all about that. I've only spoken about the financial part of it.
Okay, so New World. They're saying that New World is being sabotaged. That's our financial piece, our financial system. More than one council member has perpetuated this, so I just think we need to know. Like, people are afraid, people think that people are putting money in their own pockets, that, you know, they, Mr. Mayor, they think they've somehow inspired you to write the letter to the state of Ohio asking them to think about their finances. I know we aren't the best of friends, but I think he does that out of good judgment, not because of Facebook page. So I just think we need some answers. I understand why we're passing this, but it's all circled and tied up into our IT system.
Well, we're not passing, this is just going on to full council.
I know.
And maybe that'd be a better question for full council.
Where else do we discuss IT matters? But it's going to go on for another week, I guess.
If we had an information and technology committee.
Maybe we could get a week then to answer these questions then. That would give us a week.
At least the questions are asked, yes.
I can.
Yes, sir.
I can.
Please.
Thank you.
Or tell the future a little bit. If you give me just 20 minutes or so, you'll probably hear something regarding that.
Okay.
So I'm going to be asking for some finance, but we'll address that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question though. I mean, can I?
Yes.
So did we have any kind of written policy in place at all before this?
We have, yeah. We have a lot of different policies, but we didn't have a formal creation of a cybersecurity program. So we have password policies, we have backup policies, we have all the policies that are spelled out in this. This is just giving permission, the city permission, to create the cybersecurity program. That's the whole community ordinance. And the state of Ohio is requiring that ordinance to pass. See, all policies have already been there, they've already been practiced, they've already been done.
Are they monitored?
Yeah, I mean, everything's audited, there's all logs. I get alerts for everything. In either, in that part of it that I submitted, it talks about a lot of different things. And if you read it, it talks about alerts being needed, all this other stuff. Everything is tracked, everything is audited, everything is managed. So, you know, that's the standard practice for anything in an enterprise environment.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Mr. Rollins.
Eric Rollins, City Council at large. Just wanted to point out, you had mentioned something about having an IT committee. There was one. That was actually the last chairman of the IT committee. Previous administration decided that it wasn't necessary, so.
I think we'll revisit that January 1st.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess since we have Mr. Baldwin here, we wouldn't have to wait till next week and we can ask him if we've been hacked. Well, I mean, I know we have a tech name.
Yeah, I don't know.
Do we have any legal, I mean, if we're being hacked, do we have any legal? See, I've been, we're all shaking our heads no. Shouldn't we have like some legal cases going if we're all with this sabotage is going on?
Again, I can't speak a whole lot about a lot of different things for security reasons, but I can say with certainty that the stuff that they say is going on isn't going on.
Thank you.
I mean, the way things are set up, it, the only real thing we have to really worry about is phishing attempts. And that's, you know, that's pretty much it. Like I said, everything is audited and that includes all the different applications. It's all, it all follows rules.
Okay.
Can I ask you one more question? So you have no concern that like some secret they network is out there hacking in New World?
No.
Thank you.
There's no way for anyone to get into it.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, hearing none, we're adjourned 6:37.
Public Utilities. You here, Stan?
I'm here.
I should just move over, huh? He's never used us.
I'm going to start until 6:45 because that's what we call a meeting. You figured you guys were going to take longer.
I'm going to stretch my legs. Just hit, use it once, once. Once in 20 years, do it for me.
I'll bet I can't too. Public Utilities. Traffic Commission will be right after. Looking forward to it. Thanks, Chair.
Got broad shoulders. I thought this was all that happened.
No, they told us that it has nothing to, that it has nothing to do with one or the other.
Didn't they say after the merge, they wouldn't be?
That's what their email to customers said, that the Consumer Council said, we'd go ahead and send it because it's different than.
I'm glad we didn't do away with it and we never said.
Correct.
And you said the right, that's what you said.
No, we just needed to know exactly what was going on. I think I copied you on the emails to Consumer Council.
Yeah.
They're like, what's this? We've never seen this, what's going on? Just ask them. Personally, I thought it was kind of crazy. This isn't the time of year you go asking for increases.
I thought it was spring they did it.
I was just going to say March, April-ish, I think.
End of the first quarter.
Yeah.
That's why this kind of shocked me a little bit.
That's typically when you would do those numbers and be able to recognize the potential shortfall.
Right.
Well, with most, most.
Last minute.
Wait, maybe you should. Come on, man.
I guess the question is, is the next committee going to take up these five minutes to get to the traffic commission or are you guys going to be in and out in two?
I would, I'm long in that.
Yeah, I wasn't worried about that.
I don't know if you've ever noticed that before, but I have.
Well, some things need to be reiterated.
I'm just saying. Expected the last one to be kind of long and it was.
Well, the last one, I just felt like needed to be put to council floor and again, it's added to that and needs amended, that's what we should do.
All right, time is now 6:45. I'll call this meeting to order. It's Marion City Council Public Utilities Committee and it's the 17th of November. If you could please take the roll for attendance.
Mr. Ratliff?
Present.
Mr. Dickel? Mr. Barr?
Present.
Right, with two members present, we are going to proceed here. We have one item under old business and that is a resolution opposing Aqua Ohio's request to increase water service rates and requesting that the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio deny the utilities' request. So this will be the second time that this committee has met on this very topic. Last time, we had this on the agenda and then we received an email from Aqua saying that they were putting in a bid and looked like it had been accepted, that they were buying, I believe it was Ohio American Water or at least a portion of that company, and that there would be no increase as a result of that purchase. However, so we just left this on the agenda. Follow-up communications with the Public Utility Commission, we have learned that those two things have nothing to do with each other. So they have applied for an increase and they are acquiring more water company and the acquisition is not going to cause an increase, but they've already applied for an increase. So looking at the increase itself, it is a 17.5% increase, which is, you know, highly ridiculous, I think probably in not only mine, but everybody in the room's opinion. And that's why we're going to pass something opposing it. Now, in my opinion, and I've said this many times, I think that these utility companies have the game down. If they really need a 9% increase, they apply for 17, then they get 10, which is more than they needed to start with and everybody feels like everybody won. And the people that really ends up losing are the people that write the checks to pay the bills every single time. With that being said, though, this is the first step we have of, of opposing that. So I don't know if there's anything else from the committee?
Nope.
From the administration or from members of the audience? Okay, with nothing being raised, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to send on to council with a recommendation to approve.
So we have a motion, I will second that, to send this on to council for a recommendation to approve this resolution opposing it. If you could please take the roll to send this on to council.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Okay, so that's going to be sent on to council at these, this coming Monday's meeting. I'm going to assume that the, this will follow the normal course and we will partner with another city or two. We typically in the past have partnered with both Tiffin and Ash Dabula to retain a person to help us fight it together and then we pay a third of the cost instead of the whole freight when we partner with those other places. And for whatever reason, the way that districts are made up, they look like political regions because we are in the same district as Tiffin and Ash Dabula. So, you know, figure that out, I don't know. So, anything else coming for this committee tonight? Seeing nothing, we're adjourned.
Finally, it's going to start on top.
6:50, we've called order to the Traffic Commission. Clerk, will you take role?
Mr. Barr?
Present.
Mr. Teasman? Mr. R. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Cowell?
Yes.
Mr. Shetler?
Here.
Chief McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
No summary of proceeding, old business. Item one, Lee, Lee Street Traffic Study. Mr. Cowell?
It is finished up and I think I'd passed on that the average speed on Lee Street was 27 miles per hour. The max, highest speed clocked at 54 and the lowest at seven, so that's where we came up with 27. Over 2,400 vehicles in the two weeks that that, that monitor was placed. So I presented a letter that I received from engineer, city engineer Jeff Shetler recommending the stop signs on Lee, or the stop, two-way stop at Dennison and Lee be changed to a four-way. We went ahead and had the sign department place that for a 90-day period, trial period. So that is in effect and right now, so there's, we will see if that helps. I had invited the original people that asked about placing that stop sign and I don't think they were able to attend tonight to see if.
Actually, we have.
Oh, he is back there. Oh, sir, would you like to address the, address the commission?
Sorry, I didn't see you sitting back there.
Hi, Chair Peterson, Lee Street, 562 Lee Street. One, we want to thank you for the stop signs. However, that traffic flow is a little sporadic. Those numbers you grabbed off, it probably, as you're looking, that might be what it is, but that speed is still consistent. I think it's doing its job and stopping people, but actually, I don't think it's, I don't think it's enough. I think we need more monitoring, you know, having a present officer there to kind of see what's going on, because still yet, and then what my concern is always this, we have kids that ride these scooters and many bikes and all of that. And if the traffic flow doesn't slow up a little bit more, we'll have some critical stuff happen. Okay? But I think, I think the sign and everybody that I've talked to really appreciate the sign being there. And now that you have designated areas, let them know that the signs are there, maybe they'll pay them a little bit more attention. What you, what you, what you up against is they're, they're running from the train. They're trying to get to Lee or Fairground so they, you know, what, and what has happened previously, they changed their routing, they're now using, what is that, that what's behind us?
The street behind the church?
Yes, they're coming around this church, but then see, that's even more critical because we have our kids playing over in the park. Okay, so that's going to be something that you guys have to take a little bit more consideration of. But again, we appreciate the sign because they are doing some, what a benefit to us. I've talked to several people and they thank you for it and I think it's going to be great. The team is having a meeting right now and I'm going to report back that you guys talked about it and I'll listen for what results we get. Okay?
Okay. No questions?
Do you think that speed bumps might help in addition to the stop sign?
I would suggest that they would, but I think we would have, you would have more people here complaining about the speeds, about speed bumps in there, right? Because of the motorcycles and different things that are happening, but the speed bumps would be a benefit. I think it would be, you know.
Complaints are better than deaths or accidents.
I, I prefer. I think that would be possible to, that whatever, whatever is necessary to do until, I think what happened is anything that's new, it takes time to actually regulate yourself into it. Right now, what we have is a brand-new traffic pattern and people are trying to figure it out. Some people are coming through, they're not from the neighborhood, they're coming through because they're going to a whirlpool and many other places around, out in, outside of the city limits and they don't know about it yet. But as they go through and figure out what we got going on, that will be, I would even consider maybe taking a temporary speed box, just so they can slow down the speed signs. How about that?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, after members have had a chance to read the letter from the engineer, I would make a motion that that stop sign become permanent, that four-way stop become permanent.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. Mr. R. Smith, a second. Take role. Yes.
I think it's the wrong one, it's in front of me, sorry. Mr. R. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Cowell?
Yes.
Mr. Shetler?
Yes.
Chief McDonald?
Yes.
And Mr. Russell?
Yes.
6:00. Next item, item two, the Silver Street Traffic Study.
At this time, the monitor has been placed on, on Silver Street and we should have the data back within a week or so, I would think, so.
Okay. Anything else from the commission? Mr. Smith?
At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I think that on the speed monitoring, I, I still think that we should not consider anything below the speed limit as far as the averages go. If there's some way that we can do that, because, well, for example, on Lee Street, if you take out all the people that were complying with the speed limit, your average speed would be close to 40 rather than 27. So I think that would give us a more accurate picture of what the people were actually complaining about. So if, if there's anything we can do about that, I would suggest.
On that note, we may have found, Jeff may have found a way to glean some additional information from our monitor, but I don't know what, if you got a chance to investigate that further.
A little bit. I became aware of a software that we have, I didn't know we had, that takes the data from the traffic count and you can manipulate it to see more specifically times and who's speeding where, you know, it's, you can manipulate the data to see more what you're looking for there. So I didn't, I wasn't aware until last week that we had such software.
So we're still experimenting.
Anything we can do to help, that's what we need to do.
Anything from the audience? Ms. Gregg?
I would just ask that you would still consider producing the speed on Silver to 25. I don't really think that we're through street with the railroad tracks and with the school and our speed limit breaks up at the end anyway, so I would just ask that you would consider changing it to 25. I went down and spotted the, I just wanted to know what it looked like, it's pretty cool. So, but I would just ask, and I know I've got another neighbor back there, if you would just consider changing it to 25 simply because of the bus stops and all of the other things. It's a residential area, we get semis, so if we could just slow everybody down, it would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that something the engineer can look into and discuss?
Yeah.
Anything from the administration? Seeing none, hearing none, we're adjourned 6:58.
So that just has to do with the modern definition of through streets?
I guess I should put that.
Definition of through streets from 50 years ago? Is it going to affect any plans for the week? But if it does, then.
I don't know why it's 35.
Should be 20.
But it is a through street as, as defined, but why, I don't know, but it should be.
They did it just by length, that's all they did, they just went through the streets by length and they just went with the long ones.
I tried to push it.
We did it a little more.
I tried to push it.
Put the stop signs there permanently, go into council?
Go into council, okay, because that really wasn't the motion that was made, the motion was made to make it permanent.
Right, but it.
Is it implied that it goes to council?
Yeah, yeah. I'll be writing the ordinance before Thursday.
Sorry. It's a little long.
Oh, that was down there, holy boy.
I have short legs.
What are you laughing? What are you laughing at?
Seven o'clock, we'll call the finance committee to order, clerk, you'll take the roll, please.
Ms. Ling?
Here.
Mr. Holmes? Present. Mr. Ratliff?
Present.
We have no minutes, so we'll move on to old business. Old business is, if you could, please remove the 21 audit from the agenda.
I can do that.
So we have the 20, 22, 23, 24, and 25 audit. Do we have an update?
The last email we received was from Cynthia Lawson on October 28. Documentation was sent back to her on the 28th as well. There were a couple items specifically from Opers and OPNF that she was requesting that I didn't have, I had to reach out to the division to get them. Their actual statements or letters that contain information as far as contributions that were submitted during that, that year. Opers did get back to me, I did receive that and I sent that on. OPNF, we actually found out today that we were having email issues and they were being blocked, so I didn't actually have, I couldn't send her emails and she couldn't send any emails. So that has been resolved as of today. I also have a call with her scheduled at 10 o'clock on Friday, so hopefully I can get that information and get it included on.
And who was that with?
Her name's Michelle, she works at OPNF.
Any questions? Moving on to item number two, penalties and appeals, status on that, please.
I have not received any additional correspondence from the IRS as of now. I do know that there was some communication with Gores several weeks ago. They still have abatements in progress, but there's no update on those either.
Moving on to item number three, Finance 71, OPWC Fund, ordinance approving additional appropriations, clerk?
Ordinance approving additional appropriations and receipt of OPWC funds from the state of Ohio for the year ending December 31, 2025.
This is coming from the auditor's office and it's requesting additional funds for the construction of Garfield and Brightwood Drive.
Yes, there was an updated ordinance sent out last week, I'm not sure if you have it, so I do have copies.
Yeah, I knew there was an update supposed to come through and this is not it, so, if you could please...
I'm out there, thank you. And I did notice today that there is actually an issue on the updated copy, but I'll explain that.
You said there's an issue on the...
There's an error, but I'm going to explain what happened. So the ordinance that you have in front of you with the 229, 248, 90, that is the amount that we're requesting for these payments to be reported. The issue that I'm pointing out is that in the second whereas it mentions Garfield and Brightwood, it's actually Garfield, Brightwood, and Gerard. It was, it was just overlooked that we had three projects going on at that time. But the 229, 248, 90, that is composed of $64,878.39 that's going towards Garfield.
Can you give us that number again, I'm sorry?
Sorry. 125, 330, 56, that is for Brightwood.
So the 103, 918, 34, that was on the old ordinance or the incorrect ordinance for Garfield?
The old one was 60-something and we had received a separate ordinance for an additional 30-plus that both listed Garfield and you asked that they both be put together because it was the same street listed in the same line item account.
Right.
But apparently, the second one wasn't for Garfield, it was for Gerard.
Right.
Is that the difference?
Yes, yes.
I'll make a motion to send this on to council with no recommendation with the amendment of Gerard Street added.
Before that, I second it. On round one of this ordinance, and I'm not sure why, it feels like you felt the need to separate Brightwood and Garfield. So now we've added a third and lumped them all together. Why do you not feel the need to separate all three that you did in the first go-around?
It was requested that it was all combined.
No, I can't...
They're all, they're all going to the same line item, so if you, if you look at the first ordinance, you'll see that they're both 502, 5010, 5443. They're just specified by each individual project. If you'd rather, I can go back to that and then just total up the amount, but that, that was what was requested, that it's all combined into, into one.
Let me clarify, I did not request that the numbers be combined.
I asked that the ordinances be made one ordinance instead of two.
There was a separate ordinance that I received for 30-some-odd thousand dollars.
For Garfield.
Same line item, but it said it was for Garfield.
Gotcha. So that was a misunderstanding on our part then?
Those two were to be combined.
Okay, that was just a misunderstanding on our part then? We can, we'd be more than happy to separate them up by project.
Personally, I think that...
I rescind my motion.
So, and I said I would never do this. The, I mean, I have done my hillbilly math here and the, the numbers do add up correctly. I'm okay with sending this on with...
Why'd you do that to me? I just rescinded.
Well, I didn't hear that, Aaron.
With the, with the addition of Gerard in the second whereas, and with the understanding that the funds are going to be broke up in three lines, although the same fund number, and it be for the three numbers that you...
Do you really want to do that? Because if we do, I'll guarantee you, one of the numbers won't be right.
I'll correct the ordinance tonight after the meeting.
We should have a trail of showing where...
No, that's why that I think that we should, that we should do it. I don't, does it...
I agree, I think they should be broken up.
If we hold it in committee, does it do anything as far as timing?
No.
On work or payment?
No. So the way that this is working, OPWC writes the check to the vendor and that portion that we're recording is the portion that OPWC is responsible for, but we're responsible for reporting it on our books. So the payment's already been made, it's already been taken care of, because OPWC does that directly to the vendor. We don't have anything to do with that part. We just have to record the payment.
Okay. If it doesn't do anything, then I guess we could just leave it here, either ways. Okay.
Leave in committee, leave it in committee and break it out and, and we'll look at it at the next committee. And by me questioning that, because the second ordinance said Garfield, the first ordinance said Garfield, and I was asking for those two numbers to be combined. And then, when I couldn't get any answers, I called the engineer's office to investigate it, and now we're finding out that it was a good thing I did because it wasn't Garfield, it was Gerard.
And that's why I took a look at it this morning, because it wasn't, it wasn't adding up right when I looked at it.
Moving on to new business ordinance, 202598.
Ordinance designating depositories of Public Funds of the City of Marion and declaring an emergency is amended.
Okay, this is being brought to us by the law director and also Mr. Reese. This is the depositor, designation of depository monies, and I'm going to let Mr. Russell explain it, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. It's been, during, during the past year, we've talked about the format of this ordinance. So we've got, essentially got the team together and had a team meeting, and I believe, in my opinion, this ordinance is in a proper format, ready to move forward. I had the ability to talk with Treasurer Reese this morning. He indicated he reviewed it, he's of the same opinion. You'll also note, in regards to previous questions at previous meetings, there's more explanation about percentages. And when the ordinance draft was distributed, there are some statutes that were shared, just informational, and it's not really that complex. But you'll notice on the listing of depositories towards the bottom of the page, it lists two primary banking relationships, and it has the proper statutory language that they can't hold 30% of, of our, they can't hold, we can't deposit more than 30% of their assets. That's what the statute's saying, and I just took the words directly from the statute. So they have a limitation. There was a prior reference to, from an old statute that indicated that the first $25,000 must be deposited to a certain bank, that's been removed through time. And you'll notice, in regards to those banks that are not our primary banking relationships, we've used the verbiage, think that the treasurer has the authority to divide up, those monies not on deposit at the primary banking relationship, and they can hold up to 50% of those monies that are active monies as deposits. So hopefully that didn't create any confusion, but that is actually the statutory reference. And like I said, the treasurer reviewed it and indicated that he's okay with this moving forward and we can finally put this behind us if it gets the majority of council support. Be happy to answer any questions.
And on the second page is the, is strictly interim funds.
Strictly interim, section two, section one is active monies, section two is the interim
Can you explain to the committee the, the reasoning for the changes, especially with us going to have a new treasurer in less than 45 days? And why in section two, we are taking banks off from what was proposed prior?
So let me start with your second question first, looking at section two. So interim funds, historically precedent has been that our interim funds are with a, with one financial institution, we have one relation, it's been Fifth Third for probably more than 20 years, and the previous drafts had included some of our local banks, which aren't financial institutions of the size of Fifth Third, so those, those others have been removed. It can be changed in the future, and let me also tie this in with your first question. There was a consensus that it would be best to get this in place before the new treasurer takes office, so that this is ready to go. If the new treasurer wants to change it, that's, you know, it can be changed at any time. But the consensus by the administrators that met was there's no reason to wait while two months pass, that the City of Marion's better off by getting this in place and then moving on to other matters that the treasurer, or certain, new treasurer will have to tackle
And then I think I just have one more question, which is, on section one, the depository of active money award. And if I read this right, and I don't mean to be too picky on this, but it says to Fahy Banking Company, no more than 30% of its total assets. Park National, no more than 30% of its total assets, and I, I'm assuming its is the city's.
I'm glad you asked that question, and I heard some people, it's hard, I think, if you ask 50% of the room, they'd go one way and 50% would go the other way. But this is taken from the statute, which is actually on the informational sheet, 13503, it's actually, they can't hold more than, they can't hold more than 30% of their size, not our size, their size. So the, the its is their money, their, their monies, not our money. And that's what was causing confusion before, but this is supposed to clear it up, obviously half understand, half have the other impression, but it's just directly from the statute itself. And the state wrote it, so don't blame me for how I read it.
Okay. And then, if I am understanding correctly, the culmination of Union, Premier, and First Citizens, the wording says up to 50% of city active monies not deposited in the Fahy Banking Company and Park National Bank.
So what that's saying is the council, if it was to adopt this, that the treasurer, current or future treasurer, can place in Union, Premier, or First Citizens National Bank up to 50% of those active monies that aren't on deposit at Fahy or Park National. So the first math part would be what percentage of the active monies are at Fahy or Park National, then that would give you the number, and no one bank on the bottom listing can hold more than 50% of that number that we just did math with.
Okay, so it's not a culmination of the three?
No, it's not, correct. They're kind of ceiling limitations and maximums, and so...
Within this wording?
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't understand the, the top part or the bottom part, so I don't, I mean, the wording kind of sucks then. Because like I said, I didn't understand what either part meant.
I think we should write our representatives and tell them to clear up 13503, because it says, no one bank shall hold more than the aggregate excess of 30% of its total assets. And I actually tried to clean that up to read, just as confusing on the draft, but that's what the statute is, we're obligated to follow the statute, and I don't think it's going to be an issue going forward. I think, for, for example, banks know their obligations, they know their limitations. And of course, we all work hard to ensure that our treasurer understands the two if they have questions. But I would ask that if you do have suggested language changes, I'd be willing to work with you to modify it, but I'd like to move this forward, at least get it to council. If we need to amend it between now and then to make it more easy to read or more understandable, be more than willing to do that.
I'll make a motion to send this on to council with no recommendation.
I just had an observation in section three, I think it might be a typo where it starts to highlight the, or more than 30%. I don't know if we're missing a word there. Unless I'm just reading it wrong, it doesn't make sense to me.
Where are you at?
At the very bottom of the first page, the, and then the start of the second, and maybe I'm, maybe it's because my print...
Probably just printed differently, maybe. See if it looks the same on this.
Section...
I think it's just how my print...
I'm just saying, I don't see it.
I think it's just how my print is, maybe.
So we have a motion to send on to council with no recommendation by Mr. Rollins. I can second that. If you'll take the roll, please.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Outlaw?
No.
It's nice to know I wasn't the only one confused about that.
Moving on to item number five, Finance 76, if you'll read, please.
Ordinance requesting additional appropriations to the SCMR fund in the below-listed line item for the year ending December 31, 2025.
This is coming from Mr. Trino. Do you want to explain, please?
So this is the same standing item that we've had throughout the year with the excavation and payment bonds, that we were holding them as collateral until respect was complete and satisfactory.
Motion to send on to council with a recommendation to approve.
Second, please.
Court, take it.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Outlaw?
Yes.
Moving on to item number six, Ordinance 2026-001.
An ordinance to make appropriations for salaries and benefits and other expenditures for all funds during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2026.
Okay, this is the projected 2026 budget. Mr. Trino?
So in front of you, you have, you have booklet, and the booklet shows you the detail of everything that is on the ordinance. You just have a representation to go along with it, so you're able to see more in depth of what would be in those line items. And then, just to make sure you have the corrected ordinance, there's one inside in the pocket. I did double-check those formulas to make sure that nothing got moved over in error. Just wanted you guys to be able to work through it and see what some of the expenses will be for the 2026 year. And this is just the draft or the proposed budget, so if you have any questions or corrections, just let me know.
Do we have any revenue expectations or forecasts for the general fund?
So general fund expectations or projections, also projections, is around 14 million?
14 even, or 14.5, or?
14 even.
Even. That's for general fund?
Yeah, that's just the general fund.
Do we have anything for the non-general fund?
I'm sorry, for what?
While you're doing that, they would still have, each department would still have the ability to move funds within the allotted area.
Correct. Based on the ordinance.
Same design for 26 as we have for 25.
Correct. That worked out really nicely for the departments to be awarding money between the two buckets as needed, depending on what happened throughout the year.
And we expect changes to be made between now and January?
Yeah, I thought you just looked through it and see if there's anything, and we'll keep checking it against the revenue to make sure.
This is kind of a nitpicky item, but can you actually put the department on this fund category like you did for the general fund?
Yeah, I was just matching it up with the booklet, but I can add that, that's not a problem.
Thank you. That'd be helpful.
Yeah. I guess when you don't look or use them every day, it's hard to...
Yeah, I don't have them memorized. I don't.
You asked for a projection for the enterprise fund. It was about 22.
22 million?
Yeah, and that's worth a 500, the enterprise.
What is our current cash position in reserves, like investments, banking accounts currently as of today? Do you know?
I don't have that much screen. We can look at it at the next meeting if you like.
Mr. Reese, do you have that information handy on what we have in interim accounts at the moment? The fund balance for the interim account?
Do you still have that sheet from this morning?
So it's Jason Sharpe, Third World City Council. It's Park's about to be here in the back, and we were trying to follow along, and it looks like the 26th total budget for general fund is 19 million plus.
Correct.
And what we could not hear, and we did not want to assume the number we thought we heard, projected revenue is only 14 million dollars?
That's correct.
Oh, wow.
So touching on that revenue projection a little bit, we just asked for and received prior to the meeting from the auditor's office what their projection was. So what she's giving you is what she predicted in her projection. So I'm not sure that that accounts for grants, other things that might not be involved in that projection, so I wouldn't want to say. And the enterprise projection she just gave you has to be low. That 21 can't be, that's usually more closer to like 40 or something, but...
That's just from the 500, it's not the 2s or 7s.
That, right. I don't think they're understanding that usually they hear enterprise fund and general fund, and two very different numbers there.
When I was looking earlier, I, the revenue I, for the general fund, I was coming up with about 14,857, and then 48,569 for the enterprise and...
Million, you mean?
Yeah, million, yeah. Which I think...
Can we please repeat that? So you saw some other sheet that had revenue projections on it, or?
Did the auditor's office had sent out? I didn't get to go into detail on it, I just kind of went to the bottom line and looked at the bottom line.
And so you saw roughly 14 million and some change?
14,857.
14,857.
And then on the enterprise and non-general fund was 48,569, which is a little closer, but it's still short by about 11 million. Just a little.
And so I know you had said earlier, like, you want to make sure everybody understands, it would help if the number of revenue was the same as the number of projection. So, you know, where if you're saying that the revenue is 14 million, the projected expenditures are 19.8, but then that doesn't, the revenue doesn't include everything. Well, if the expenses include everything, it would help if the revenue included everything.
Right, and I think that the issue for us so far moving forward has been focused wholly on the budget and meeting with the departments, and just today asked for the projected revenue from the auditor's office. And having not had time to delve into that prior to today's meeting, knowing that our budget this year went up by about 800 and some thousand dollars compared to last year.
I've got 912.
Compared this year's budget to last year's budget, general fund budget, it accounts for pay raises, insurance increases, and that kind of thing, not really line item increases that we've held to last year. That's how we started everybody out, was on last year's budget. So really, the only increases in here that we're seeing are the payroll increases and insurance and things that we don't have control over. And to answer Ms. Lang's question earlier, absolutely, we made changes as recent as today. This morning, when we were going through the budget again and the draft that she gave to you guys, so it's going to be a working document from now until January 1st, when it gets closed.
So with it being the middle of November, do we have a projection of what our income was for '25?
So one of the things, Paul talked about, one of the things I want to say is that one of the biggest things is that we don't recognize one-time revenue, whether that be a grant, or a donation, or something like that. So even though the projected revenue might be 14, we could still bring in more than that with one-time revenue that we don't want to recognize as onboard revenue. Does that make sense?
To a certain degree. But if we know it's coming, we should absolutely recognize it. And so do we know what our revenue is for '25?
Yeah, I was just looking for that. On the budget performance report that I had seen, year-to-date, we were at...
And this might go through October 31st.
Correct. So with two additional months of potential revenue. What's interesting, prior year was 16 million, and I know from being on council, it was at least 16 and a half million the year prior. So what's driving the loss of 2 million in revenue?
Without knowing exactly, I can certainly tell you that our income tax, when we made that change to the income tax, and people of about a town compared to in-town, has accounted for about 500 and some thousand dollars of that.
We didn't have that last year either, though.
Yeah.
So that wouldn't be from last, from...
I'm accounting for what that impact has on our budget for next year. So without that 50%, it's showing 567,000 dollars, something like that, and less revenue than we would have had. The other part would be, I'm sure, is some grants that we're no longer, I don't think we have safer grants anymore, so some of those grants have fallen off. Other than that, I guess I don't have a real good explanation about why, other than we're not seeing the, and that's what we were hoping to, usually, the deputy auditor can say how much we've had brought in in income tax and what he foresees between now and the end of the year. So we went through October, I think, and we were slightly down over last year, is what he told me before. So we're still trying to figure out exactly the revenue portion. Like I said, we've been working on the budget portion and getting everybody to put their budgets in, starting with what they had in their line items last year and moving from there. So increasing the percentages as far as salaries go because of contracts and 5% insurance increase for health insurance, and adding all those things together.
So do we have an answer on where we're currently sitting at today on interim funds? Because, I mean, we're...
I think it's about 7.5 million, isn't it?
Right, I think, talking about this report, right? So this shows interim funds at the end of October being right around 10 million.
I think that's off.
That's the form we were looking at this morning that says the treasurer balance is 9,974,397.
Not for the cash, that's what you were asking for.
The cash balance of all of our funds?
Yeah.
No, I understood the question to be the cash balance in the long-term funds, because I think you had said interim funds specifically.
I did.
So that would be different.
The interim fund would be a little over about 7.4 million.
And then we have about 2.5 million in active funds.
I can give you the exact numbers that are on here. The Fahey Bank general ledger has 2,37,490. Union Bank, 12,611. First Citizens, 2,021. Fifth Third, 7,523,224. Fahey Bank payroll, 177,321. Union Bank, 3,346. And First Citizens, 250,000. And that came to a total layer of 10,6,016,53.
So I guess, work under the assumption we pass the budget as is, what is the administration's plan for next year? Because we are going to chew through all but about 1.5 million of that?
What are you explaining about?
Well, we have to make up, so...
Oh, okay.
The difference in the budget.
Yeah, I mean, if you're only projecting 14 million in revenue...
I would like to get our projected revenue, a little better answer to that coming from the auditor's office on what our projected revenue is going to actually be. And once we, to say what we've done already during the course of these meetings that we had with department heads, we've tightened our belt already going into '26, knowing we're going to have to tighten some more. So there's several positions that we haven't filled, that we've left unfilled and don't intend filling those. Some in the police department, some on fire, some in the city garage, some in transit. So we're just not replacing people through attrition. That's one of the biggest impacts is salary, obviously. We're also looking at...
I want to be clear, the total number of uniformed officers isn't decreasing, is it?
It is decreasing.
So to what, to what levels?
We were at sixty...
We're authorized in this budget for this year, sixty-two. We are going to be at three.
Fifteen hundred.
And Chief?
Uh, we're up there, authorized strength of sixty-three. Down low because of a low staff fee, but with two retirements projected next year, we'll be at sixty-one.
And those are, you know, now that he's mentioning, I mean, those are things that we have to look at for next year, too, that we, that we can't budget for. We don't know who's retiring for sure, but when somebody retires in the fire department or the police department, there's generally a pretty hefty payout. Also, twenty-twenty-six has a twenty-seventh pay. For those of us that, you guys, I know that Ayers has been around long enough to know what twenty-seventh pay is and what that means for municipality, and I think we added it up today, and our payroll for one pay is...
One by week, you think?
Yeah, it was like one, huh, eight, eight hundred and some thousand dollars. So adding another pay to that, next year will probably be close to eight or nine hundred thousand dollars extra. That, we did budget, I mean, we put it in there, so that's some of the difference that you're seeing and, and what we're looking at. It's, it's, all the while, we're still trying to make up for negative line items that carried over from twenty-three into twenty-four and now into twenty-five. And you remember last year, Casey...
At what point is Schertz are not responsible for the budget? Like, at, like, at what year is he not responsible anymore?
I'm not saying he's responsible for it at all. I'm just saying, and I'm saying we're still trying, in fact, that's one of the things that the state has concern with, is still having negative line items. And last year, we paid off three point nine some million in negative line items, and our budget went from fifteen million up to twenty because of that.
Well, our, our invested money has went from thirteen million to seven and a half in two years. So, you know, so we can say Schertz are left us with line items, Schertz are left us with money in the bank.
I, I just gave you what, where some of that went.
And so I mean...
I just told you that three point something million of that went out to pay negative line items that were carried from... It, it's like, I like to use the, so you can build up a big savings account if you're not paying your bills.
Right.
If you're not paying your bills, I can build up a big savings account, but we're trying to pay our bills because that's what the state says we have to do.
And I understand that you had three and a half million dollars of line items, but we've spent five million dollars of the invested money. So we, you know, so we, we can't say Schertz are, Schertz are, Schertz are because...
I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that our budget, our budget really has not increased dramatically from twenty-three to twenty-four to twenty-five and now into twenty-six. I mean, we're talking within eight hundred thousand dollars in between those budgets. And if our revenue starts declining and our, and our expenses stay or go up like they did for this, eventually, we got to catch up. I mean, we can't, with, that's why some of the invested money had to be used. And I'm, 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 I'm right there with you. I'm just as concerned about that as you are.
I mean, I've said for two years in twenty-six, the city will, will have, will have layoffs. And I, there's, I don't see how you're going to get around those. You, you know, you can't have a fourteen million dollar projected revenue and nineteen point eight million dollars in projected expenses with only seven and a half million dollars left in invested money and think everything's okay, because it's not. It's just, it, it's just the math doesn't work.
It absolutely doesn't seem okay to me. Thus is the reason I wrote the letter to the state a couple of weeks ago. So it obviously doesn't, it doesn't seem right to me either. But we're going to figure out a way to get through it, and I don't want to talk about layoffs. It's way too early to talk about that. I think as we move forward and we don't fill positions, then, and I also want to see what our revenue does. So I want to be able to trust the number that we're getting in the revenue to see if that's truly what we're expecting.
Can we kind of see some revenue projections, just from there?
I, Martin sent something shortly before the meeting, and it was in an Excel file. And I'm obviously not an accountant, and it was difficult for me to read just trying to brush through it. So that's on our agenda. First thing tomorrow is to look at that and, and see what that is.
And then to put another cog in the wheel, I think we have some big expenses for payments that are due between now and the end of the year. So I think that we're going to be under seven and a half million the next time that the Treasury Investment Board meets.
Treasury Investment Board met this morning, nine o'clock.
And what was, was there a recommendation?
The recommendation was three million.
Two point one, then it would be another nine other dollars. We would get that or reinvest it.
There was three million four hundred and some odd thousand that had not rolled into new investments. That was available to be used for our big bond payments that you're talking about.
So now we're down to about four million.
So we're basically a loss starting this year.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to argue. I'm just trying to give you the facts of where we're at today and, and how we see our way through this. And so today, we had about, so they have...
Are you talking about the bond payments? Looking forward to what we have to pay? It was two point one million something.
Roger, I was looking for something. Can I ask a quick question? Jason Charles, City Council. So the legal request was to have the TIB meetings prior or on committee nights. I don't recall any notification to anyone. So was this an actual public development meeting? So that's, last, last thing I heard was it was going to be on committee nights.
I didn't know you guys met either.
Public. There was a notice that was sent out by the deputy auditor last Friday, I believe.
To...
I, I can't tell you. He just told me that he posted it. There was a discussion about when we could have the meeting, and it was decided on nine o'clock today. And we were assured today, prior to the meeting, the public notice had been given and had to meet.
Did anyone from the public attend?
No.
Did any of you phone, wait, did anybody from the public? No.
No.
I, I mean, you know, I'm just saying, I didn't know. I'm assuming Councilman Rollins didn't know.
Nope.
We're two, we're two-thirds of the finance committee.
We would have to ask Deputy Watts how he posted that. I'm not sure.
Okay, I have a question. Victoria Arndt, Fortin Clover Avenue. As I'm listening to all these numbers, I'm listening to all these meetings that are coming at the last minute, the morning, the morning of, I would like to leave something for you guys to think about. This is not fair to the public. It's not fair to you committee members, period. Everybody comes up here, they say what they have to say, which I understand, but nothing is ever finished for anybody to understand a total to what you're need. It's their job to think ahead of what you're going to be asking, because most of them have been here long enough to say, so-and-so's going to say this, ask this. Do I have an answer? Our auditors still don't give the frigging answers, period. I've been doing this, what, six years approximately? Thank you, Dick. But I don't hear us going anywhere. I'm hearing our mayor say, we're coming in a bigger hole. We've been asking for at least six years, what are we going to do? Ayers, you're the one who kept saying, something's not right. Not that you were blaming anybody. You just said, this is not going where we need it to go. You unfortunately said to me, don't bring up the past. You yelled at me when we had Barr come in. But we, if we don't look at our past, here we are. That's history. Myla has been one who's more than willing. Dick and I do have done grants. We know for a fact you asked for more so that they will not give you that extra more in your cut. We just did one for a church. Was it the exact amount we needed? It was very shy, but let me tell you. The people who gave Dick and I that information knew what to do. And that was...
Was that the, it wasn't the city, was it the state or was it federal?
Whoever's. So it's not what you were saying, Mayor, and I'm not a seventh you, but we don't know what we're doing. And I'm hearing the same thing, and I haven't been here for about six months, maybe a year now, because I got fed up. But I'm concerned as a taxpayer, and Dick and I don't have small taxes every day. And he's been involved with the city for years upon years upon years. So he's put in a lot of money, and where is it?
I mean, bottom line, the issue, the underlying issue in this entire city is the fact that since two thousand and nineteen, the city has not done its books right, has not been accountable for the money that, that we have, has not been able to project revenue, has not been able to project expenses, has not been able to do any, any accounting financially. But meanwhile, there's been a city to run. Meanwhile, there's been streetlights that's been turned on every night. And meanwhile, there's been streets that are paved. And meanwhile, there's been cops that are paid. And the city had to run. And it's been running blindly for a long time. And now there's going to be hell to pay because nobody knew what was going on. And I, it's, it's, it's no single person's fault. It's a whole bunch of people's fault. But meanwhile, there's a whole bunch of people that it looks like that it's their fault that truly had a job to do and had no information to do it. And that's been the story for the remain, the last portion of Schertz's administration. That's been the story for the entire Collins administration. We've had the last two mayors that had a city to run and had no information to do it. And, you know, I mean, I know, you know, people don't like hearing to talk about layoffs. They're coming. There, the, when the math doesn't work, there's no alternative. And the math simply doesn't work. We simply are running the funds dry to run the city the way that it's currently running.
Victoria Arndt, Fortin Clover Avenue. What I would like as a council to hear for this particular moment, and many of you will be on next week, is that we need to start looking, that we're top-heavy. We have hired a tremendous amount of people to help other people who were incompetent, period. Not blaming anybody. We've had things changed where it has cost our budget since we've had a new mayor that a lot of people have questioned why, and we were all told to leave it alone. We've got issues with people that have taken funding and still working in, in the administration offices and outside, but nothing is coming in. So if you're giving money, we give money to reach, get money in return. It's a, it's supposed to be an asset. We have really done something backwards, and I believe I'm the one who said, what's for the future? And nobody could come up with it. And that was longer than six years ago, because I've lived here over twenty years. Nobody could give an answer then. Nobody has given an answer today, tonight. And yet, who's going to pay the price? We've got big administration bills coming in here, paying payroll. That's our payroll. We need to look at that and ask, what are we going to do? We need to let some people go, not just the police and the fire, those who need it. I mean, we've got issues going on in the streets. I've known that. I, I used to minister in the streets. That's all I'm saying is, we need to start cutting from the top down.
Madam Chairman, I just want to answer a few things that she just mentioned. So talking about cutting from the top down or adding positions. We have added one position under Biden's administration, and that's the Director of Budget. Other than that, you're right. We added a, we added a grant rider who brought in one point eight million dollars already in seven months. But we also reduced staff in the zoning department. So the, the only one person that we have truly added was the, the Budget Director of Budget and Finance. Just recently, we, we have not hired, we've replaced directors in three departments and not hired an assistant like they had before. So we're, we're, I, I hear, I hear what they're saying. And we're trying to make a difference with that. And, and to say I wasn't concerned would, would be an understatement. Obviously, I am concerned, and that's why I sent a letter to the state. And that's why we're trying to pare this twenty-twenty-six budget down as low as we can and still operate. Like Mr. Atlas said, you know, you still have a city to run, you still have garbage to pick up. A lot of those departments, we have not filled positions in, nor will we fill the positions. And, and till we see where we're at.
Your unfilled positions, have you taken those salaries out of the nineteen point? My eyes are so bad, point something?
Seven four.
I got nineteen point, it looks like eight four three.
Yes, they should be taken out and accounted for, but I will double check and bring those with the projected revenue.
Well, I was hoping the answer was no, but...
We talked about that this morning, and she's going to double check to make sure that we went over the positions that we had open and weren't filling, and she's going to double check that, because that was one of my...
If you go to the very back of the packet, it shows you there's about two million less than actually.
Which, which, which packet?
Sorry, the booklet. All the way at the end, the, I think it's like complete fund grant rule or something at the very end.
Last page.
This one.
Yeah, you should be able to see between twenty-twenty-five amended, um, twenty-twenty-five amended budget versus the proposed twenty-twenty-six.
Something we've always talked about before in sitting through council meetings, of talking about carryover. And I think a lot of people get the misconception of, if we don't spend everything on our budget, it's carryover. It's really not carryover. I mean, it's just money that we didn't spend. So everything, like you said, Mr. Atlas, everything comes out of that cash balance report. And that, that's the bottom line, is to look at that cash balance report that we have every month to see how much we still have invested, how much we have in our accounts and that. That's where our, that's where our surplus of money is at.
So if you're trying to give us previous years, I don't think that it's labeled.
Yeah, that's why I'm not, so is this twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yes.
And this is twenty-six?
Yes.
So the first column is twenty-three?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
It should match the, the page in front of it. So just like these. Do you have twenty-two point that? I guess I just didn't drop it down to that last page.
So the first column is the twenty-four year-to-date. Second column is twenty-five amended budget. The third column is the twenty, twenty-five year-to-date, and the fourth column is the proposed twenty-six.
Sorry, I just didn't drop it down to that last page, but it around the other.
Some of the other cost savings measures that we're already looking at is the big project plan for North Prospect Street next year that we've already put on hold. If you go back historically to the reason our bond payments are so high, is we've had a lot of street projects, and they just kept going, more street projects, more street projects. And, and eventually, that adds up to the two, two million dollar bond payment that we made today to cover those bonds and those projects. to cover those bonds and those projects. So and then we just recently this year have the EPA long-term plan that we have to follow and borrowed $14 million for Phase 2 and 3 of that project that we haven't started paying off.
Now, what's on hold for North Prospect?
North what is on hold? The entire project. So they had done the engineering, which was already done. The engineering was done, and just like they have done other streets with sewer sanitation curb to curb, that was going to be done from the overpass all the way north to Fairground Street. And a multi-million dollar project is going to have to wait. Even though we were getting some grant funding for it, our portion of that was going to be very high.
Not the most.
So recommendation is to send this on to council so that it can go through the process and be available for approval on January 1st.
Can I ask a few questions, please? I'm writing some of these down here, and Craig will make sure I have them all written down correctly. Okay. So as of right now, we're projecting $14 million in revenue, but we're not sure. And that's $2 million less than what we brought in last year.
We don't have solid numbers.
I said projecting. So right now, we are projecting...
That's what we were told, yes.
That's what we were told.
Yes.
We don't know.
So what I wrote down is correct, I guess, is what I...
It seems on track with what we're bringing in this year.
I feel like I'm on jeopardy, and I don't know how to word the question. So I'm wording these questions incorrect. Seems similar to what we brought in last year is what you said. That's what I was saying.
No, I'm talking about this year. We're at $13,513,000 and change for this year. November and December would be some of our lowest months of the year. Would that be over $0.5 million that we're going to bring in? Would you typically, you think?
I was going to say, don't we have a rough estimate without of what we normally raise?
I think 14 probably is about what... Because that's what we're going to have this year. You know, I mean...
16 is what we brought in last year, I think I heard, is what you said, though.
That's correct.
Okay. So I understand there can be discrepancies, like we might have collected something special that we didn't, or bonds, or grants, or whatever. I get all of that. Okay. But we're projecting 19 in expenses for next year.
Point.
Ish, 19. I'm just keeping the numbers. I'm not doing the decimals. Okay. So that leaves us with a $5 million shortfall, but we're saying we might have more revenue. Magically, we may come up with another million somewhere, hopefully, possibly. Maybe two if we're lucky. If Santa's good to us, if we've been good. Okay. So that still leaves us millions of dollars in the hole. And then you guys have explained, or they told us now that they've cashed in $2.1 million of our long-term investment, or interim funds. So now we're down to like five, and that would be enough to cover our shortfall. Are we allowed to pass an unbalanced budget?
No.
So by the beginning of January, that $5 million has to be found or cut.
Exactly.
So in six weeks, I hope the people listening to this, in six weeks, we have to cut about $3 million, to be safe there?
We do or we don't. We passed a non-balanced budget last year.
Oh, so we can just do whatever we want.
Well, so there's a difference.
Well, there hasn't been a balanced budget for a long time.
Well, silence sabotage.
So you can pass a budget where you have higher expenses than revenues if you have the carryover to cover that up. We're getting to the point that we don't.
So at the beginning of the year, we would have zero carryover. So say February, something bad happened.
I'm talking the beginning of '27. There would be zero. And that's, and, you know, we've...
So we're blowing through our own savings account next year?
We've always, we've always heard on council, you have to have a $2 million carryover. And that was said 20 years ago. So is it still two? I don't know. Maybe it's two and a half or three?
Aren't you glad you're leaving?
You know, I'm still mixed there. But, you know, there has to be significant changes in '26. It just does.
If not, all said, by the end of next year, we would be out of money, zero dollars.
Yes. It's simple math.
I said, okay, speculation, yes.
Speculating.
Hey, we were speculating about silent sabotage on the internet, so I think we can stand up here quietly.
Your next question, please.
Ma'am, you need to...
Your next question, please.
Unless it's fighting words, I'm allowed to say it.
Keep it to what we're talking about.
I am. We're talking about the budget and how screwed up it is. So, and I just want to make sure everybody... Okay. Like I said, I'm not sure I know how to phrase these questions tonight. Is this jeopardy?
Well, here's the thing. We don't have the answers either.
Then how are you not...
We're trying to get them.
Do you... Okay. If you don't have the answers, how, first, how can you sit up here and yell at anybody? How can you go on the internet talking about silent sabotage?
I know I'm not the chair, but let's everybody stay, committee and...
I agree. I apologize. I'll be the bigger person here. If you're so frustrated, imagine how the people that don't sit in on the silent sabotage and all these $2.1 million bond payment meetings and all these other things. We get our information through a Facebook page. And when we ask questions and we're told we're not asking them directly. So we're, we talked about, to Ms. Arndt, okay? She brought up some good points. All this money that we've created, the positions that we created, we're creating another six-figure position beginning of the year. Let's put that out there. Is that included in the budget?
I have to assume it is. I haven't reviewed the actual budget, but it is referenced in the notes here in the beginning, so...
So we're, we need to come up with $5 million, but we're adding a six-figure position. We did add, only, you said, we only added, well, we added two. So we agreed that the grant writer wasn't added position, but she has been valuable. Along with her, we got $10,000 worth of desks. Let's not forget that. Let's not forget the $60,000 worth of stickers and wraps and bus decals and all the other stuff, the street signs. So we're sitting up here talking and blaming Scott Scherzer. Scott Scherzer didn't have $4,700 worth of wraps in his office. Scott Scherzer didn't spend when it was late on the bus line and he will not, would not tell us how much it cost. So we clearly have a revenue problem. We also have a major, major spending problem. $5 million we need to cut, y'all.
So which is the committee then?
Jason Shaw, Third Ward City Council. If the purpose of tonight's meeting is to see what we can look at cutting and see where we can pare down this budget, is that what I'm hearing is the goal tonight? Or is it just to simply pass it on to council?
To pass it on to council so that we can get it through the three reads to be ready to approve a good budget on January 1st of '26.
So we're going to just get the readings in so that the new council on January 1 at noon can make a decision?
We'll make adjustments between now and then.
So that is the purpose of this meeting, is to see what we can pare down?
That's not the purpose of this meeting at all. The purpose of this meeting is, I'm the mayor. I'm probably in the best position with my administration to figure out where we need to make cuts at. So I don't think I would come to ask Mr. Rollins where I should make a cut at in the Parks Department because he probably wouldn't know. So I don't think that's what this meeting is. This meeting's about pushing the budget forward so we can have three readings. And during that next three-week process or six-week process...
You will come to us.
We will, we will come back to you guys with changes each week or when we meet to tell you what changes and what cuts we've been able to make or what more revenue that we've been able to find.
So, and one more thing, the budget book that you have, the three members here, do the new council members or incoming council-elect members have this information? I would hope we would get that to them.
We discussed that earlier today, and they're going to be sent that information electronically. And they can also get a book if they want a book. Doesn't matter. But we'll make sure they have it.
And the last thing that I'll say, and it's probably going to be viewed as, and it's not my intention, but as a parting shot because I will not be here, but council is due to receive a raise. And I think just by leadership, by example, this budget, if it's sent on to council, those raises should be removed from '26 budget. Just because there's going to be some tight cuts anyways.
Unfortunately, I don't think this is ready to pass on to council because it's not, it isn't a balanced budget. And I don't see how we, you know, although I was, had said I was going to earlier tonight, you know, we've tried to make it a habit not to pass ordinances out of this committee that we know are going to need to be changed. And so maybe we need to have a special council meeting at some point. But to get all the readings in, but I personally don't feel this is ready to be passed on, being $5.8 million out of whack. And that's just on the general fund side.
So if we hold it in committee, then you can give adjustments to us? And I will call special committee meetings then?
I would assume we'll have a special council meeting at some point to get all the readings.
We'll have to get three readings.
I know, yeah.
Well, the third reading is January 1st. So if this comes out of committee on December 1st, there's two council meetings before the end of the year.
So at this point, which is the committee is to hold it here? And we'll look at adjusting it in the such going forward. Moving on to...
Sam Arndt, 154 Council Street. How much are we in a rearages of property tax and trash and everything? And is...
Property taxes, property taxes, we have no control over. That's county.
Trash service and all that other stuff.
Trash service, that's enterprise fund.
So yes, but wouldn't that be bringing income in?
For the enterprise fund, not the general fund.
Yeah, it wouldn't do anything for the discrepancy we're talking about tonight.
Okay.
It's all, it's just, it's a whole separate pot of money is the... And if you want to, I am more than happy to sit down and have a cup of coffee and go over, go over budgets, you know, one of, you know.
It's going to be more than coffee. Lunch, dinner.
But really, to her point, I mean, the enterprise fund is $10 million short, so...
How much? Projected, projected?
Projected, 10 million. So I'm showing a total enterprise budget of $58,500,000. And according to Finance Chair, she shall, she Shaw?
She thaw.
Yes. A projected revenue of 48,569,000. So we need to get the projected revenue nailed down. I think first and foremost, it would be good to see those, those numbers from the auditor.
Okay, moving on to item number seven. The fire fund. So we are removing that one from the agenda. And then...
There's not on the agenda.
And then it's just here.
I believe that's from the mayor.
Ordinance 2025-063. Depth number seven?
Yeah. I thought that was related to IT infrastructure.
No, no, this one is. But the one that's listed down there was...
Okay.
Finance 77 was actually going to amend 2025-063.
Okay. So moving on to matters not on the agenda.
I got a couple. Um, just to give some updates, is there any update of the money council passed at its last meeting for the $25,000? And just to give us an update of what's been done with that for the...
Madam Chairperson, I'm going to hand you draft ordinance that is responsive to Mr. Ratliff's questions. At the last council meeting, Council Director of Administration and the mayor's been working to put together a plan to expend the $25,000 that the council identified that it desired to have spent for, to address food insecurities caused by the federal shutdown and the SNAP being defunded. So this is actually an ordinance which would appropriate the monies. And the mayor can follow up on the plan to expend them. But this is the appropriation ordinance, as everyone's well aware. There can't be an expenditure actually made unless an appropriation is approved by council first. So I do already see a typo. There's some typos that need to be fixed. There may be some additional changes that need to be made between tonight. And hopefully, the committee sends it on to council and we can make changes before the Thursday noon deadline. But with that, I'll answer any questions, but I'd like to turn the floor over to the mayor so he can explain the administration's plan of action.
So we met shortly after the last meeting when you guys proposed that. And the administration, we felt that it was best to use a single point, like the Salvation Army, to distribute those funds too because they have, they reach out to all the food banks and they know the people in need a lot better than we do. So we talked with them, and they were willing, obviously, to accept a $25,000 donation and distribute it accordingly. But we needed an ordinance to be able to do that. So that's where we're at right now, is trying to get the legal authority to make that happen.
I'll make a motion to send on with a recommendation to approve.
Second. Miss Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. All right. Another one I have. I was asked earlier today what the update is on the fire station and where we're at with that.
So just like the North Prospect Street project that we were working on, the fire station has been put on hold. We have had some architectural work done by that company. They've already paid for that. But we've reached out to the legal counsel that we went with early on in that process, and that is also being put on hold.
And Craig, 65 Silver Street. I understand why we're putting it on hold because we're broke. Where's our tax money going to go? Where's our tax money money going to go? Did I word the question correctly, Mr. Rollins?
No, you have the same concern.
Okay. Okay, I worded it correctly for Mr. Rollins.
So if I may, Madam Chairperson. The main reason, as the mayor just advised, the pause button was hit in regards to the destruction and the turning of dirt at the new fire station is related to our ability to borrow funds. Without a bond rating, it's very difficult to borrow funds.
Same for a year and a half.
So this pause, which I'm hoping, in my opinion, this is just me, not the administration, is short-term, and we're picking this up again early in...
Working on our credit, or the kind of sort of...
Got to get a bond rating. And actually, there were discussions by administrators about possibly borrowing money without a bond rate. And believe it or not, the rates weren't that bad.
Really?
But with the request for the state auditor to do a fiscal analysis...
We can't, we don't follow that.
We're just going to wait and take three or four months, let that process work through, and then talk to the safety director about reconvening, in my thought, just my opinion, sometime in March, and say, "Where are we at? Do we have the bond rating? When are we going to get the bond rating? When can we borrow the millions it'll take so that we can expend the money that we send in as a part of a..." in as a part of our real estate taxes? To answer your question directly, those sit in the fire fund, and they aren't expended except for those purposes.
Wasn't there an issue with the fire fund being co-mingled with the general fund or something, really, we're not separating it out because we don't care about the interest or something like that?
No.
To give us a feeling.
My recollection is, and from my observation, fire levy funds that we all pay to the county auditor, that then sends them across the street, are safely deposited, separated out. There's no co-mingling that I've heard of.
Okay.
I think there was a question about interest.
Okay.
But that's a legal question, so you're right.
Okay.
But they're not co-mingled.
Okay. So, they like might be, and all, like, all bonds all go to the same, all tax levies go to the same thing, an X amount of fire dollars or whatever. But I don't know why we wouldn't be able to keep track of the interest on it, then, if we know that.
Well, we should be able, we should be able to keep track of the interest.
Okay.
But those fire levy monies that are being paid by each property owner in Marion City...
That are safe somewhere.
They're separated, they're sitting in a fund.
Okay.
And they should be able to be accounted for separately from all the other city monies.
Because you know that would have been gossip tomorrow morning, right?
Right. I'm glad you asked the question.
The fire funds are being spent for something else. That's what it would have turned into. So, someone, Mr. Cal, what you got to say?
Just to maybe clarify just a little bit, we, the architect's been paid for the work that he's been done to this point, and we did not authorize him to go to the next phase, to start working on the next phase of the design, which would have required us to commit to the next payment, which would have been 35. The first payment was 10% of his fee. The second payment, when he would completed that, would have been 35% of his total fee, so we stopped the process there. We were, had shortlisted our construction managers to three firms. In talking with the law firm that the mayor addressed, the Ricker Graden that we brought on board at the beginning of this process, they said, we can stop that. We'll have to go back and start from scratch on that, but the architect, we won't have to. The construction manager at risk process will have to go back to zero. But the only thing that we have invested in that at this point is the few hundred dollars it takes to, to post it in the, in the proper channels, and the time, the time and the effort that the committee, selection committee, has put into shortlisting those firms, if that helps.
So, no one's going to sue us for breach of contract right now?
Right. And that's why we reached out. We had a conference call with Ricker Graden to make sure we could, that we were stopping this in the right process without opening ourselves up for a lawsuit.
So, quite some time ago, I don't even know if you, I'm assuming you were on at this point, but after we, I believe, authorized the purchase of the building, at that point, the budget director, Tacey Courtwright, had come to us with legislation that had to be passed in a certain amount of time to make us eligible to borrow or bond, I want to say, $9 million for the project. Is that ringing any bells?
I think that's the way that process...
So, did we, did we do that? Because it, it, it had to be done in 60 days or 90 days. There was, there was a short window that we had to act to do that.
I'll check on that, but I think that was just a matter of passing an ordinance that would allow us to do that, to put the cost of the building back into the, back into the loan amount or something like that.
Okay.
So, I think that we met that timeframe. Now, it may be a move issue, but I think at the time, we met that timeframe to be able...
And I believe that was so we could go back if we wanted to and get bonds to cover the original cost of the building.
Cost of the building, right.
Even though we already paid that, we could go back and get bonds.
Okay. And then, it was, it was my understanding when, when the original tax was proposed to the voters, was that the plan all along was to bond out the building and then make payments on that with the money that had come in, because we could never, we, we couldn't have taken in that much money to pay cash for the building. Like, that was the plan from the word go. So, the, the project being placed on hold, does, the, the revenue that comes in from the additional tax, I don't know why is affected by the other general fund struggling, because the same monies are going to, are coming in whether we're struggling in other areas or not. So, I, unless, and, you know, and all cards need to be put on the table, I believe that if push came to shove, the way that the ballot language was, and this was one of the issues that some council people had, was that salaries can be paid from that money. And so, are we keeping all options open? Because we may have to choose between having a building or putting people in a building, because we may not be able to do both. And so, it, but if, if that's why it's going on hold, just, you know, I think people may understand, I'm just, you know, I, I just, you know, I'm one that likes to lay my cards on the table.
I think you're correct on the language. However, us putting this project on hold was because the financial institution that we were just talking with, Baird and Associates, originally told us, even though our audits were behind, that since this was dedicated money, and we were going to get some preliminary budgets from '21 and '22, he thought he could still work with us on securing bonds at an affordable rate. However, now that we're going to be in some sort of fiscal watch caution, he said, we need to, he said, I'm not sure that I can get you that affordable rate now. So, that's, we were in discussions with him and with the attorney. That's why this is, project's been put on hold. I'm not sure we can afford a percentage rate that they would have to charge at this point.
Okay. And then, there were three things that they asked me, and I don't remember the third one. I apologize. So, that's all I have.
Madam Chairperson, before you adjourn the committee, I actually have one matter that I'd need to bring the attention of the finance committee. I would ask that the committee go into executive session to conference with the city attorney concerning a dispute involving the public body that is a subject of or pending or imminent court action. So...
Can I ask a question? Hey, Craig, 360 High Silver Street. At 2021 audit, I've been going through it, it's well over 100 pages. 150-plus correcting entries, I saw that we needed. But what in the world's a cashless evidence room?
I can do it.
Is it where I picked stuff up that was stolen from me?
Uh, that's the evidence room. So, when I became chief, we went to a cashless evidence room. So, when we seize money from a drug dealer, or we have money that's taken as safekeeping, I don't want to keep it in the evidence room, so we give it to the bank.
Understood.
And then, when people get it back, they get a check from the bank. So, and that's all accounted for with the auditor and the bank, but it doesn't go into new.
Boy, that is a lot less suspect than it sounds, isn't it?
It absolutely is. So, that, that's the issue.
That makes sense why you don't keep money in there.
Right.
But that's all it is, that you put money in the bank.
Correct. So, we don't keep it in the evidence room downstairs with them. So, it doesn't get mold, fire, or be a temptation for death.
Right.
So, we take it with, our policy is, whenever we have cash, within three days, it goes into the bank.
That makes perfect sense.
And there's no interest, right?
There, no, it's not allowed to have interest.
Thank you for clearing that up. And when will the findings for recovery be coming out? Because I know six-plus figures in fines and interest, it looks like the city of Marion taxpayers paid, and just wondering when we'll be getting our money back on that one, because that would go a long way to, well, not a long way, but that would help some revenue situation next year. Should we have any idea when we'll be...
It's up to the state.
To issue a findings for recovery that's up to the state? We don't, they've not told us when they're going to release them.
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that, okay. I was just wondering why they put out the audit and not the findings for recovery.
Personal opinion, I think they're going to be rolling.
They're just nonstop, just like...
I think some of them are...
Oh, you mean they're going to roll from year to year to year, because that's what they are?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, vote to go into executive session?
I would make a motion to go into executive session, allowing all members of city council, current and elected, as well as the administration.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Ratler?
Yes.
I just texted her.
You said elected, so that means...